Okay, so we're, we're, we have a, we have a, we have a quorum.
Recording in progress.
We have a quorum? Okay, good morning, good morning, everyone. Mabuhay and hello from Manila. I am calling this meeting to order. Today is the twenty-first of February. Calling the Board of Trustees Guam Academy Charter School Board of Trustees Meeting, twenty-first of February. Regular board meeting and now calling this meeting to order at eleven oh four. Um, I see we have a quorum. I have trustee Arquiza, trustee Havelock, trustee Rosie, um, trustee Lou is of Ireland and myself and ladies, ladies and gentlemen, we have a quorum. Okay, may I have an approval, a motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting in on January seventeen, twenty twenty-three? Motion to approve?
I second it.
Who, who, uh?
Mister Iblak.
Mister Iblak, yes, Mister Iblak, uh, Mister Iblak have a motion, the motion to approve the regular meeting of January seventeen, twenty twenty-three seconded by trustee, trustee Tanya Tonggo. Another approval with our special meeting, January twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. Can I have also a motion to approve the special meeting of January twenty-three, twenty-three? Thank you trustee Rosie, um, who was there for his motion? Was he? Yeah. Hello?
Yes, I hope that we have a special.
Okay, motion by trustee Havelock to approve the, the special board meeting of January twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, seconded by trustee. Uh, okay, for all the two, for two regular meetings.
I don't care, I moved, I had to move because Mister Iblak was not present at the meeting, so Mister Arguiza have to second this out.
Okay, but you obviously have, uh, this is not about the attendance, but it's about the content of the meeting for that day.
Oh, okay, so that's okay, right?
So you're looking at, you know, the, 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 the synopsis or, or the overall topic for that, for that day needs to be put in motion and voted in. Doesn't have to be a, somebody present. You are, you are board of trustees, so you should be able to vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, all motion passed. Any question?
No question.
Any discussion, trustees? Okay, CEO, take it away. And I getting a clear, a clear, uh, when I getting a clear voice on this? Hello? I could hardly hear everybody.
Yeah.
Madam Faye, we're having some, uh, technical difficulties right now. There you go.
Our wifi is going.
We're connected to the hotspot.
So it's connected to the. Okay, with a face protein. Yeah, it's buffering. There. Mister Arquiza, do you hear us on your end? Yes. Right?
And I really, really thought it's a challenge. My family and friends and a grown man and just everything just started fresh before I asked.
No, somebody is talking on the background. Who is that? We can, we can, can she hear us? Do you hear us now, sir Arquiza? Can you give us a thumbs up if you can hear us, please? He's cannot. He's on mute. It's on mute.
It's mute.
Unmute. The matter of fact, she's gonna go back in. I call you back, yes, then we're in a board meeting, okay? Yes, then. Thank you. Okay, there's.
Yes, it's good.
You can't hear?
Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Uh, CEO, you may proceed. You have the floor.
Okay, so for our calendar, number one item is our ASVAB. Our tenth graders, our, um, juniors and our seniors already finished taking their ASVAB test. Um, the last ASVAB we took was in twenty twenty, um, or in twenty nineteen before the pandemic. So it's a privilege for us to schedule ASVAB exams for each of our high school students.
Did we have any result yet?
Uh.
Or, are they taking the ASVAB or just reviewing for ASVAB?
The first, um, scheduled it since then, yes, since they scheduled it for, since January, therefore, it's the, the, the test for military, it's a military, the branch of military.
What does it sound for? But.
ASV.
So I know.
Uh. Yeah.
CEO, I know that you have, uh, you have all the dates, seven thirteen and seventeen, was, was, was that all, did they take that exam those days?
Vocation aptitude.
Armed services.
Armed services, vocation, aptitude, battery.
Yes, ma'am.
Did they take those, those, uh, exam on those day, the ASVAB exam, seven thirteen and seven, uh, seven thirteen and seventeen, they did?
Yes, so we have to schedule it in a way that every grade level has their corresponding day scheduled. That way they are prepared. So a month before, since January, their homeroom teachers have been preparing each grade level students for the ASVAB test, like practice test, because it's an aptitude test for, um, which is a requirement for the, any branch of the military.
Correct, correct, nice, nice.
Um, this is also in preparation for the groundwork of our CTE, because according to our data, um, our seniors, most of them want to push through after high school to the military service.
Wow, that's very nice. I think in your, in your next PD, you should invite some, some head of the command to speak during the PD, so we'll have a better, uh, so the, your, your staff, your, your instructors, your teachers and everybody would have a clear, uh, understanding of, uh, of the various military, uh, services, if you, if you, if you, your time allows. But that gives your, that gives your teacher the, uh, a better understanding of what the career, uh, is looking up to, right? And, uh, I, I, I think it's a win-win situation when our student are really gearing towards, uh, going to the military. Oh, we're proud of them. Yeah, go ahead, CEO.
Yes, as a matter of fact, the, um, army, armed forces tomorrow will be coming here to do an orientation for our high school students, for our seniors. So it will be held in, um, LRC. So every branch of the government have their own, um, schedule to come in. So to, to, tomorrow is already, that way the seniors or our high school students would know what's the Navy, what's the.
You're at, you, you're ahead of the game. But that's, uh, make sure you capture that in pictures and, and so we'll put that on, on our report on any, or anywhere that the GACS need to put it back on some of the renewal or the annual report, that some of the endeavors that are gonna be successful when it comes to what really, uh, what really is our motivation in putting that, uh, putting that forth, the ASVAB exam and then bringing all these militaries because so they can understand more what the military is all about and the various branches of its services. Ah, viva!
Yes, thank you. You are a team because you're on top of everything.
Yeah, beautiful.
Uh, number two is our professional development day, which is, um, next, it's already in a week time. Our, uh, February just ended in February, um, twentieth, or no, February ten. Our February PD was held February ten, um, and the next one is on March third. Um, so, um, the schedule will come up soon. Um, we're just finalizing the, the time, but the, it's, um, somehow a continuation of one of the presentations for last time. The supervi- supervision for PDIS, which is, uh, everyone was, uh, really enjoyed the, the presentation. So we're, we invited again from GDOE, Mister Franklin Tiago, to speak on active supervision for the, specifically for the staff.
Wonderful, yeah. We have a very good relationship with the Department of Education, yeah. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, we have, um, part three, our 401K and investment annual conference. This came about, we, um, I think it was Ms. Jamie or Ms. Vadette who received an email, an invitation. Um, it's gonna be held on, uh, at Hyatt on March ninth. So we will try to, uh, we will make sure that we will attend the conference. That way we can see the benefits or the new updates for our 401K. Because this is, um, hel- held by, um, A, A, A S P.
Can, can I possibly, can, CEO, can I possibly attend that? Uh, well, uh, it, it doesn't have any fee, it's free, right?
No, so we'll register, uh, well, uh, Ms. Jamie will register you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm interested in understanding that, yeah. Yeah, thank you. I, I think, yeah, yeah, let's do it, because we are not on a 401K, uh, uh, retirement program, but maybe we can delve into it deeper and see what are the benefit versus, versus the current program that they're offering with us. Thank you. I, I'd like to be able to sit on it, thank.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, number four item, dream it, be it, some career support for girls. Um, I, we've shared this, um, flyer to, to, you've seen the flyer, um, it's going around. It will be held on March twenty-fifth at Hilton. Um, as of now, um, we already have a listing from our principal on who will be, who were recommended to join in this one. Um, yes, for middle school girls.
Career support.
Yes. Um, so every flyer or every opportunity that we have received from the different agencies, UOG, GCIC, it's not just sharing it, um, by poster. We actually, um, just, uh, we announced it as well with our homeroom teachers. That way they can encourage their own students from the homeroom and, and our, um, curriculum coordinator, um, our counselor are, and of course with the help with the push of our principal would, oh, would guide um, these students and, um, actively participate and guide them through the application process as well.
Nice, very good.
So the five, um, National Charter School Conference, which will be held on June eighteen to twenty-one. Um, originally, oh, uh, June eighteen to twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. Originally, we fought, we allocated funding for it locally, but, um, when I was reviewing our E G application, um, when I got it back, I've seen that it was approved for the under consolidated grant. Therefore, we're going to, uh, Ms. Joyce already connected to GDOE with the federal programs and we're just like waiting for specific instructions so we can send the three people, um, and we paid on.
Yeah, who, do you have some of your, some of, some of our, some of our GACS people to be sent? Who are we sending from GACS, uh, especially your, your, the principal, vice principal, yourself? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. I, I could hear you, but am I coming in clear?
All.
You guys are.
It's just breaking a little.
Yeah.
Um, there's one administrator, so it would be, um, and this, this side and, and, uh, voice as a rep of the finance team and the operations and then a teacher, Mister Maniki.
Okay, Mister Monarchy, okay, okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, just make sure, so you have three already from the National Charter Conference, right? Uh, you're, uh, we attended this already in many times. I think this is my, I already had a second chance to do that. Yeah, so just, just send your recommendation and your, uh, the names of the people that need to attend this conference. Oh, boy, the audio is bad. Ms. Anne. The audio is bad.
What's that sound? Okay, do you hear us now?
Okay, good, better, better, better.
Okay, so, um, for the number six, um, we have, uh, another opportunity for travel this time because we freed the budget for the national conference of the charter school. Then we have an opportunity to send our counselors, counselors to the American School Counselors Association at the conference.
Nice, nice, very nice.
That may be following, it's like, um, it's a good advantage for our counselors to be, to be there. But, um, a requirement to attend is for them to be a member. So.
Are we a member?
The two counselors will try to be, um, register as a member. The, every individual, it has to be an individual. So, um, however, I just inform you, it's a good news that Ms. Maria, our assistant principal, because she's into counseling too, she's a member of the, of the.
Can we send Maria? Can we send Miss Maria?
Definitely.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I, I think you have to send key people there on this ones. Uh, she being a member, I think it would be good to have her nominated and, and actually be, uh, be the representative for GACS and she would probably have some familiarity with association, right, and the organization. So the other ones are not member yet. So just make sure Ms. Maria goes. I don't know if there's any concern from the other trustees. I think she's, she has a, uh, she has a membership and also a counselor by, by all the different aspect of her profession. I think we should be able to let her spearhead the group. Trustees?
Especially this. Right, so, and she's familiar.
Um, so before that, we send the administrator, but, um, this is just one. The only, um, drawback is just because she has a baby, but, um, I already opened data for her, so it will be her decision. Oh, okay.
What is the setback? What was the setback again?
She has a baby, so we're waiting for her schedule to make sure that she will be available on those dates, because it's a. She has a brand new baby.
Oh.
Yeah.
She has a brand new baby?
Oh, Miss Maria has a baby too. Not brand new, but she has a baby and, and so they would have to arrange like, uh.
Okay, 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 okay. Okay, 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 uh, uh, whatever. Yeah, it's okay. That's very, quite difficult. Yeah, I understand that. Okay, let's move on.
I'll give you an update as soon as they find some sort of, uh.
Yeah, I think, I think we should be able to get an update on the delegation for the National Charter and the American School Counselors. Just keep the, the, the Board of Trustees updated and who your, who, who is representing GACS on these two conferences, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Number seven, go ahead, go ahead, uh, CEO.
Yeah. Do they provide reports on like the conference, say, attend, as we do in the government of.
They do.
They do, yeah. The last two, yes, the last.
Yeah, we do report them. That's why, um, the last two, they. Yes, so the last two conference we had, um, in the summer, ACTE, um, the travelers got back and they have to report during one of our.
Yeah.
To share, yeah. Here. To share what they learned. Very successful, uh, PD as well, because they share what their, their, um, insights and what they have learned. Um, same with the two travelers under the CG as well, they also read.
Wonderful.
So it's a requirement.
We're.
Item number seven, fax, so this is our, um, Renweb. Faxis, um, is the name of the, the defender. They are now called Faxis Student Information System. Um, before it's called Renweb, so they are holding a conference in Florida. So, um, we already have budgeted this under local grants ever since.
Who are we sending for the, uh, for, for the fax set?
Ms. Ressa being the one, and then, uh, IT, our IT coordinator, Mister Jonah.
Yes, yes.
Third person, I really wanted to attend because I.
Yeah, why not?
Yes, but again, I'm not sure if I would be able, because that's the July and that would be our summer. And it's, we're starting summer school, so it's like a fifty fifty.
Yeah, because, be, because the, the, the more you understand what Renweb and, and all its capacity, uh, in our classroom, the better it is, because you have your IT and of course Ms. Ressa, who's, uh, who's running it right now, uh, 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 through the, through this circumstance, right? But she didn't have any formal training. But, you know, it's, it's, it's good that we have this now for her to have a, a formal training on Renweb and supported by your IT. But, you know, if you can make it, I hope you should, because it's better that the management team, one of the management team, which is you should really understand how you can explore more of the functions of Renweb. So with the, with the existing campus and the new campus, you'll be able to really expand the use of Renweb, since we've been using it already for, for many, many years. But this is the first time, I think, we're gonna be having a formal training, right?
Yes, ma'am, and that way we can maximize the features of Renweb as well.
Yeah.
For, um, payroll or time sheets.
Yes.
For the staff and for the meal program as well.
Yes, the POS have not been utilized for so long and, and it's right there. So the POS, once you go on CNP, that, the, those data are very important. Or during the application with the child nutrition program, the, the data on your Renweb on the meals program is very important. That has to be captured. Then, of course, your ADA, also your ADA as, as dictated by the charter law. You gotta be able to track your attendance, your a, daily, your average daily attendance. So you don't have to do on a manual, on a manual kinda like attendance thing, but your, your Renweb should be able to speed out those information, um, efficiently. So just some of the, some of the few things that, that could be, uh, utilized through the, uh, uh, really exploring the Renweb capacity, capa- or capability. Go ahead, I, I think, is it trust to, who, who wants, who wants to be recognized? Trustee Havelock, go ahead.
Um, along the same line, talking about the, uh, yeah, Renweb, technicality associated with that. Uh, I, it's, there's big money.
Wow. Very bad, very bad, uh, very bad, uh, audio here.
Broadband that we are still trying to get, uh, to. But I will talk to the lady that is preparing that, so just get ready, because you'll be receiving there.
Okay. That's good.
Probably training, you, you have to come up with a plan as to how we're going to use the money.
Okay.
That's gonna be island-wide on the broadband, on the broadband that will be funded by, uh, I believe the governor had launched, uh, actively that there'll be some very, uh, introduction of the broadband in the whole of Guam community, so.
Vision infrastructure law.
Yeah, 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 because you know, that's the only way we can attract business on Guam, to be able to have some very stable and strong broadband capacity. So that's, that's wonderful. Thank you, Trustee Havelock. A- anymore, any question on the item one to seven, uh, trustees? Okay, can we just go ahead and then move on to the report, CEO, on, uh, the other matter?
Yes, um, to move forward, part A or letter A of our reports, emergency grants, ESF two and ARP. Um, Jamie would give the update on ESF two. Um, but before I get, before she gives the, the amounts for ESF two ARP, just to let you know that munis, um, local munis is still not up and running, so that's why there's a hope.
There's a switch, right?
Like, yes, we have to use.
So we're just delay, we're just delay on, on the, on the information on posting, but continue to do it internally. Um, the munis one will be something that, you know, that would match all the funding, in case audit comes along. Uh, it just match the funding of what's given to us and what's still not given to us. But it's not up and running, the, the new, the new, uh, the new program that they have?
No, not yet, because they have to convert all the codes from the federal munis to the local. But, um, yes, we are on top of our files and even our, um, we're doing all the paperwork. We have all the quotes ready to be uploaded.
Yeah.
Uh, modification of POs as well that expired, so all those are.
Yes.
Case, uh, we have a good relationship with the ESF two and ARP audit team. Um, so they really work with us and guide us, make sure that they give us feedback right away. So it's a relationship with them that we have built and that, um, it's like, um, real time.
Yeah, yeah, so, so continue to do internal or all the internal controls, it'll be okay. Because that usually would, would really take time, since this is, these are new, new, uh, in, introduction of what Gabon wants to do with, with, you know, with their, uh, with all their procurement, et cetera, right? So, but be, be diligent and be, uh, be accurate with what we have, because these are all federal monies that needs to be, it's to be, uh, take, you know, needs to be, um, recorded and reconciled and, uh, just in case audit comes along, you guys are, are ready, so.
So, um, since we're on the ESF two ARP and next would be the CG before Ms. Um, Jamie shares with us the, the exact amounts of where we're at right now. Um, um, Ernst and Young, who is our auditor, also, um, are, has, um,
preliminary.
Preliminary audit on our, on our grants. So they've been asking for, um, documents that we have been providing them. Uh, um, it's a matter of, um, just waiting for an official word from.
The auditors.
From, from GDOE, ma'am, to make sure the assets that we are receiving, who is the wonder? If it's really, we are the. We are the, we're just, we're the grantee itself, or we are the sub-grantee. So it's more of a communication that the auditor is waiting for um with between GDOE and the audit team.
Yeah, we're definitely, we're definitely. We're definitely gonna fall under the sub-grantee category. Uh but because the amount is more than seven hundred thirty thousand, you know, those are, those are still subject to a single audit. As a sub-grantee, so anyway, I I have no, I have no worry about that because Ms. Badet is very uh uh, you know, is very. All you guys, you and Ms. Badet and Jamie are all on top of the uh, the uh accounting and uh. And um accurate inventories of all the, of all items received. So uh, yeah, so we'll just, you know, we'll just see what, what the. We, I never had any, any. Do not have any concern, I just know that our 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 internal controls are are very good.
Good, are in place, yes, it's just a matter of like having a different category or. Uh but it's, everything is there, just like what you said, so the amounts will stay the same. And it's reconciled with what um has been granted to us.
Yes, 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 yes.
Um Jamie or I give you the floor for the reports on ESF two.
So for for ESF two and ARP, since we haven't been able to enter any new requisitions, numbers are. Numbers are still the same for ESF two out of the two million seventy five thousand eight hundred eighty two. We have two hundred eighty two thousand nine hundred eighty five point thirty four left to spend and um. Um total requisitions. Pending purchases orders is at six hundred ninety five thousand two hundred twenty five point twenty four. Um for ARP out of the four million sixty one thousand seven hundred forty nine, we still have a balance of three million. Eight hundred forty six point twenty six, so. We will, we will spend it as soon as we're getting ready, as soon as we're, as soon as the local munis is up and running, we're.
Good, 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 good.
To explain why it's big amount, because under the ARP, it comes from with a different objective. It's um equipment and supplies to bring back face-to-face learning. Four million pro- um amount, but the items are very less. So one item costs about three hundred thousand, so once it is approved, then we expend it all. So everything is ready, it's just a matter of uh PO approval.
So it's all, it's to, it's all big and high item, right?
So the only things that we were able to put in under ARP. To justify that to bring back for face-to-face are the benches for the cafeteria. The camber or the heating, so those are small items, four units, three units. But it's a big chunk amount of money, um but furniture, because this is um. For the federal grants, it has to be, it can supply it. Yeah, desks and chairs only for the extra rooms, but. And the playground, mobile playground for safe and um health and safety. Um a big chunk as well is the. A summer school, so it doesn't show yet, but we already did two, two years of summer. Worth, and that's how much? Sixty thousand already, so sixty to seventy thousand, so that's hundred forty thousand. It doesn't show there because we didn't get to input the actual amount yet. But it should be there, it's already taken out because they received their payment already. Which again, our third summer will be be on um this coming. Yeah, uh no, so um summer at school and after school is under the ESF two and ARP. So even the two hundred thousand balance under ESF two, I'm sure it will be um maxed out. Spend to the penny because the the after school right now is under ESF two. And that's eighteen um instructors and one site manager, so twenty three hundred times. Nineteen people, that's already minus the two hundred thousand.
Yeah, just to be all consumed, okay, move on, move on, move on, CEO.
Yes, so um letter B consolidated grant. Um is still under FPD, Federal Programs um Department. Um these are items that we already have um used and utilized under the consolidated grant. So PBIS, which is uh PB point one. Um through, under the PBIS, we had a systematic active supervision training last February. Under, we have invited the PBIS coaches. So all the teachers enjoyed the the, during the PD session, that's that's why we're inviting them back again. We're maximizing everything. Through this, we also had the Swiss program, it's a. It's a program to keep track of all the behavior referrals. Uh minor incident reports and it's a, it's free, it's gonna be paid by CG as well. We already have inputted our um behavior referrals. Starting January this month, um we had a training already, we have a PBIS cadre. PIS coach and that's. Um to report on our accreditation as well, because it's one of our objectives and goals. In our um plan for for accreditation, to keep track of. And how to reduce the the incidents and the our. Behavior um reports, yeah, and it's um it's been good. Teachers also have been reporting that they see now that. Um those who are students who get in trouble, there's consequence. Attached to it, so the there's a reduction of behavior referrals now compared to the previous data. And it's monitored and teacher appreciate how they. Have been seeing what was the consequence for this child before they're wondering. This child is always doing the same thing, um so. Um Swiss is an extended program, it's easy to manage, although we still use the Renweb system on. On um recording all our incidents. This is an additional, but this is mainly for decision-making. Um so that we can filter all the reports and give charts and um updates and progress.
Good, very good.
Um part two, under the CG also, which is paid by um CG. Is the PBL Project-Based Learning Training where. Um I believe you have six employees, you send six employees. Three of them already um finished the training, it was um two days. One of the, one of the two days was also the same time that PD training, we had the PD training. So three teachers, one middle school, one elementary, one high school was able. The three of them already completed the first batch of, the first two se- uh first two days of training. Under these uh project-based learning training, so project-based learning training is like somehow related to STEM. Because it's an application so that they can lead their students, the high school students on to the career path that they wanted. It's the incorporation of how do you use math, it's not just standards, how do you use math at in the work? Um how do you use it for for um science, it's not just. The just like um specific standards, but um the skills that they need on how to use it or apply it. In the real world. Um the next set, I believe, of the three teachers will be March, March. March, this coming March, next week. So but there's six employees already. Um three point three STEM, which is a PD as well under the CG. Uh we already sent, this was held in December, we even had drones from it. We got like, um and Ms. Pinto, who is one of our. Science teachers was sent over too, so she's been using. The materials and some of the things in our after school, so. So we see the growth in our teachers, they they learn from it. They come back and they apply it and use it in the class, not just during the classroom, but also after school.
Oh wow, good.
Um part four, initial teacher certification program, we are again approved for this, this is. We already have two year, two consecutive years where we send two of our teachers. To training for free to get their initial certification. Um I've shared with you some photos of those who graduated, Ms. Stacy just graduated. Um that's last, it's uh you taking UOG classes, so. It's part of her portfolio as well, so again, this is to.
Be certified.
And this is an action step also that we mentioned in our accreditation report to Cognia. You have to have a meaningful PD. Uh professional development opportunities for your teachers, so because that retains their.
retains and improve and and a wider understanding of certain, certain issues and certain things that needs to be. Done within the school, or just improvement of how they deliver their uh. Their teaching protocols, yeah, wonderful, wow.
Um and ESL materials and assessment, so uh we've confirmed that. Um GDOE will provide us assessments for our six, five ESL students. Uh Ms. Angel, our ESL teacher, has been working handed um. Directly connecting with um the ESL department. Some uh material from that, from us buying. So all these items under the CG, instead of using local funds. Uh we are taking advantage of the support that we receive from CG. Sped Assessment is another um, uh another program that um. Sped Department is using, it's not used by the whole GDOE yet, but it's it's like a assessment program. It's like an online tool to assess the standards. And the Sped Department is using it for all the Sped students. Um because we have about thirty Sped students under these, so they are able to use this um program. Um they have their login information, um our CRT can use that as a tool. To modify their lessons, that way it will assess what. Uh what they need, what standards they need to take, uh regardless of their IEP. Um Bootcamp is another one that is under CG, so we saw that it has been approved, so we can. Bootcamp is a program where we can send our high school students to work. Work during summer, it's like a training course, so instead of going directly to you um. Uh UOG or GCC, it's under the.
They select a trade that they would like to, yeah.
We're also uh approved of that.
Who are we partnering on the bootcamp?
It's under CG, so we don't have to go straight, we just tell them.
Yeah, okay, interesting. I think I know, I I I I know why they're asking for uh. Certain quotations, they wanted to in, they wanted to be inclusive, other aside from the public school. They want also private school, I think you uh, yeah, and they probably have in mind also the charter is supposed to be included in the bootcamp. Uh just go ahead, uh CEO, America, good news?
Uh party, America and Ser Guam. Um last Friday had a meeting directly with the director of Ser Guam. Um um she was, this of funding opportunity workshop, it's the NOFO, it's otherwise known as the NOFO. So it's a five-day workshop. Um so the first two days or the first four days were attended by both our counselors. Just to get their input too, because um originally Guahan or GATS. Uh was able to take advantage of America as well and um the. The POC or the.
What what kind of programs can we?
So they send, they send um, they send um.
Participants.
Participants to us and then they do to touring. But that was the program that we are under before, um but it just ended during the pandemic. So this school year, um Mr. B, our counselor and Ms. Sanchez already. In the beginning met with the UOG and America. Because just to revive the that um, that engagement with America, because they used to send um. Um volunteers to help.
So it's still the same, it's not a new one.
Um it should be the same, however, because when they ask for how many we need. Um that's why it was, it was already ever since, I think, even before January. Even last year, they already met with with the person. However, it was just like waiting for each other to, for the MOA to be approved. So when Madame Fay sent me the, the contact name, the director of. I connected both of them and then she was able to like say, okay. Because there's a need, they were prioritizing before the need in the library. So we're not um in the priority. For the American volunteers, the ones they're they're paying to to help out the student. So there was a delay, we didn't get our volunteers from America or our supports from America. But when we informed them that we actually need twenty, because there are like. Every classroom, there's a student in need for um one-on-one um.
CEO, I I know one of the issues why we stopped, and I I think that we had to assist uh. At at one point in time, is they're requesting for an office. And that was the, if you remember, uh trust to have luck, those days. We kinda had to cut off on that because they were actually ex- expecting that we provide a s- a small office. Uh for the American participants that are gonna be brought into the school. These participants will be probably uh. Deployed in several classrooms, depending on how many they're gonna be. But they're also gonna be a a sort of an office for this uh, for this uh Amer- American participant. Do we have an office for them? I think that's my question. Because that's the reason why we did not went ahead with the. So I I want, I love the program, but the consideration of having an office. And again, Ms. Agun had over and over again asked me, I said, do you have an office, Fay? Do you have an office? So I said, because I didn't know that we already have layers with that Charlene, uh other UOG and. There there was always the issue when it comes back to uh continuing the American program, so do we have an office?
Yeah, so those two are two different um supports that we can have. So the first one that we used to have, they only send a few students or a few volunteers to help our students. That's a different, that goes with the memorandum of agreement, that's what we wanted to revive and continue. So just to give you the good news, finally, last Friday, she approved that. So they will send us, we will have an orientation on this coming Saturday. Their students, so we revived that memorandum of agreement, those two, those volunteers, they don't need an office space. The reason, um and that's already ongoing, the the only thing that she's saying is that because that's a lot. And these, um that program, of course, they would have to prioritize. And these, um that program, of course, they would have to prioritize the need of the community. Um. So they have to rotate them, they cannot just help out Guahan Academy Charter School. So if the library or the mayor's office needed help, then they will pull them out. So she's saying that I cannot promise that they will stay with you the whole year. Especially if you're, even if there's a need. We are, we have to to. Deploy them in different areas to help out the community. So that's the reason why she encouraged us to apply for our own, which is. Our own funding under directly to the America, it's just like we have our own America here. At Guahan Academy Charter School, which is a very good opportunity I see. But I was also honest with her that if there were requirement for for that. For us, for G A X to have our own America here, uh G A X instead of U O G. Instead of having that, we have the pool already. It's good opportunity, however, the requirement is, yes, you're right, you have to have your own office. A small office only, it doesn't have to be separate office. But could be just a divider, like you put one blade here. Um that's one, and I was very upfront and I said, right now we prioritize to build our. Our spaces for classroom, we have utilized everything for classroom. Because that's our main priority, number two requirement is that. Would have at least two um employees who should be full time employees working on your own America. So um I shared with her that that's kind of uh for justification. Um who will, who look, if if there's, the salary of those two people will be under local. Local that we could be due for audit, why are you hiring them for for. To do, like for example, admin assistant or a clerk and then one who does the payroll specifically for the Americans. Um we're funding it locally, but we're not using them for the classroom or for the school itself. So that's somehow like double dipping like you're earning, but that's good for audit. So um she gave us a different um like like creative ways on how to do it, like for example. You put a focusing, um that's the reason why some of the charter schools are earning, they have supplemental income. They have fundraisers. So that, but the point is, we have to do, we have to sit down with, I have to sit down with Miss Bedet to see if. If 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 the benefit, if it's cost effective or cost efficient, because the payroll. Uh which she made a good point, so every every volunteer they pay eighteen thousand dollars a year. Which that will be get, uh that will be taken out of the funding itself. So if you have ten volunteers who will be like teaching or assisting our students. Eighteen thousand times then, that's a hundred eighty thousand already paid for by America itself, by the funding itself. However, the salary of the clerk and the payroll. Thousand, that hour, sixty thousand.
Okay, I I think, I think the solution there is. You have your entity, Guan Guahan Academy have two entity, well, actually one. You're a nonprofit organization, put it on your nonprofit status and leave alone the government funding. Then you have a separate funding for just being a nonprofit and utilize, open the books on that. And create that particular grant for your nonprofit status using your five O one C. That's the only creative way that I think you can utilize this and have the best of both world, right? So because you're not, you don't wanna touch on the other funding which did not, for one thing, you did not declare that as part of your budget. So that hundred eighty thousand is still gonna be impactful in in terms of like audit, right? So if you, if you have a creative way of putting it on your five O one C status, I think you'll be okay. You'll be okay, uh look into that, you and Bedet look into that and see whether you can creatively use that under the five O one C and engage uh. Engage G A X with the with the uh with the American, with America. That's the only way I could see, you could, you could actually dispose, I mean, you use those funds legally. And without uh any consequences on our uh on our uh government funding. It's still federal money, but separated from the federal, from the local funding, so I I I, the intention is really not to to mix all this.
So it's already set up. We we are not, because I was told that when we created our account, they were already, the books already and I confirmed with Miss Bedet. The, I mean, the bank account already has, so it was already set up.
No, it had, and then we closed it, the American bank account was closed after the. But in the beginning, it was created like that.
But we don't have that count anymore, yeah. The the bank account is there. So the setup is, we know um for 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 the payroll of those two employees. Because they will not fund those, that will be our share. So we have to be creative in ways of getting more funding. And see where we can get those extra funding, it's called be touched by the local fund.
You you cannot open the account as only strictly American, you have to have.
If you have a school.
Hello?
Income too, we have. An income.
The opening of the account is a nonprofit organization, which we already have, can you guys hear me? The, it cannot. You cannot qualify the account only as American, anytime you have a non, a a non-government funding that you will receive. That particular account will be okay, whether it's American or another nonprofit grant. Or another grant for a nonprofit status that we have, that particular account would always be good to to set up, uh Miss Bedet. So you don't mix it up with the government funding, so you have there. A Guam, Guan Guahan Academy Charter School as a nonprofit status or whatever you name it, but it, anything that is. A a grant or something that goes in there that has nothing to do with public funding, with the government of Guam money. That will be safe, that should be okay, uh you guys can research that and and.
But uh, Madame, yes. Yeah, we 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 know that we can separate it, it's just that where do we get the source of income? To spe- to to pay those to to support that sixty thousand. Because they will not, they will only give the hundred eighty thousand for the volunteers. But the payroll for the two employees who will be working full time for that, which is let's just say thirty thousand each, sixty thousand. What source of income do we have to use so that they, those two employees?
Those, those are reimbursable, right?
No.
That then we're dead, where where you come up with the sixty thousand, that's 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 not feasible at all, you cannot utilize that. You cannot utilize that definitely for for that purpose unless you show that they are tru- truly uh. Uh employers of G A X, but in this case, they are not. They are not, so it's very difficult for for me, sorry, I I yeah, I now I see your point.
But but there, but you know, we don't shut off those opportunities because we. We we aim for to be, to improve, right? Because we we should have, we should be able to have our own fundraisers as well, that's why we have the N A F. Or that's why other schools and other charter schools or private schools have like a student store. So all the income that they get, it's it's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Your nonprofit activities. So we just have to be creative on how to be self-sufficient as well. So that we can like earn our own uh money and use it. It in a way, so which I will call for another work session. Because I have ideas on how to to earn those money like. Student store resource, already we have our vendor machine, so we get. Commission on that, I know it's very little, but. And then we have our N A F, um N A F procedures already uh in place. So the the bookkeeping and everything is separate and that is already handled. It's just like additional resource, source of income. Um as well as with the the students. Um another idea that I have is like, for example, the students who are not eligible for free meals or reduced meals. They have to pay, that's our money, that's not local money. So if we bill them now and then we allot it as as our own income.
Yeah.
Yeah, which leaves me to, I think that's.
But you have to be careful with that, Miss Anne, because your funding, your meals program is times seven hundred eighty thousand, I was having some. Times seven hundred forty student, you have to be a little bit careful with that. Because that funding that you have for your meals is equals to what you you propose as the number of student. Times the amount of the meals, you gotta look at that very carefully. Cause if you, you're gonna put that money back to uh to our account, it's correct. But to put that aside to your nonprofit uh category, almost like enough, I I think you have to be careful, look into that. I I'm not objecting on that, but what I'm saying is, when you submit your budget, you computed it at seven hundred and forty student. That's why you have X amount of money on your meals program, so just be very careful with it.
One we did, just to remind you, we we did eighty five percent, yes, we we know that, yeah. That's why I said we really have to sit down and we have to call on a.
Yeah, yeah, work that, put that in a work session, just so we can, we can, we can take the needed reading so we don't get in trouble, okay? I I I really like the whole idea of setting aside a special uh. Our special meeting for that, only because we have to start looking into uh developing revenue now and in the future. I always told you that 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 fourteen acres is so big that we could probably have rental spaces there. That's that's something that we can factor in once we start putting the loan loan information with the bank and say, hey, look. These are, these are revenues that we are anticipating and those are projections that sometimes will help us in getting our funding from the bank. It uh from anybody, but still it doesn't resolve the issue of uh everything reverting back to the government, so anyway, that's another topic, let's move on, let's go.
Okay, so um. Letter D is C T E plan, which is the College and Career Technology Education. Um counseling program, we call it that um. That program specifically because we wanna make sure that it's specific for our G A X students. And based on our data, as as I have mentioned, that most of our seniors or most of our graduates. Um tend to go to the workforce directly instead of pursuing um higher education. So we wanna provide them with opportunities and the skill set that they need so that they can have. Right away, uh that is the 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 um the name. Specifically that we had um discussed with that, with the the principal, assistant principal um. And um um the the leadership team, so how do develop that?
How does the, how 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 is the work key uh? Oh, i- integrated into the C, into the C C T E C P, uh are are they integrated together or that's a separate? That's a separate thing that we have to do for our student, because you already acquired the work is information, right, from G C C? How is it, how is it integrated to C C T E P?
So so under this C C, C T E plan or our C C T E C P. First, we have elective classes that we already, we already formed the groundwork, I would say the groundwork. We played the groundwork already, we form, we did the groundwork so that.
Sorry, sorry. Sorry, sorry, C O, I I I didn't realize, I was falling back that you will be touching on that, go ahead then, we'll we'll just sit around, sit around at the C T E plan and then. Move on, because you have the work is information at the bottom, I'm sorry.
All the item. 这些东西 under C T E plan, which is we, where we developed it or um according to chronological order. So first, we had the leadership classes um since January um third um third quarter. Um there's three modules to that, I choose, I do, I change, this is the leadership classes from John Maxwell. Where our students who completed the leadership class will not only earn a credit. As elec- elective credit, but also will get a certification that they completed their um. Um their leadership classes from from John Maxwell. Um those are, um we don't call them soft skills anymore. But those are skills or leadership um skills based on on value. So how do you prepare yourself, how do you choose, you have different options, how do you make a better choice? Um these are all based on values. The number two elective class that we have is still um the Allied Health, which is connected to our. Regen W T program, it's still being taught by Miss Andra, our nurse. So these are for students who want to be in the field of science. And they wanted to go to, so that we have an uh an elective class that as well. Um in the after school program, I have mentioned also in the past um board meeting. We have also like um lessons on on um. Substance abuse, sorry, substance abuse, so these are all elective classes that we are trying to for, to have. So that it's meaningful to our students, it's not just like regular electives. Because we're trying to direct their pathways. Yes, um part two, we already, um these are groundwork. So part two of the C T E program as well, that the administration or the academics team has laid down. Is the social emotional lessons, um during the pandemic, uh we know that. We cannot function well, our goal is to improve our students, not just academically, but also. Not just mentally, but also socially and emotionally, the whole well-being of the student. So we do have two programs that we're using, both for students and our employees, which we already started. Uh Wayfinder is a a program that I have um. That was introduced to us um in the Charter School Conference, Madame Fay, in one of the booths that um we, I went around. So we are paying for this program, they provide us uh with social emotional lessons from kindergarten to twelve. So the the. Teachers are using this as a resource, so instead of like, what do we do? So it's from K to twelve, uh lessons already, they can just download it and they do it in their homeroom classes. Because we have a set schedule for them every day, Monday, Tuesday is for reading comprehension. Wednesday during the homeroom thirty minutes, they will do social emotional lesson. Thursday is E B I S, so now the teachers have the tools and lessons for that.
Good.
Committee for Children is another um social emotional lesson that we acquired. With the use of E S F funding. Uh we received it already, but this is for kindergarten to fifth grade. So this program, instead of being um um introduced or um delivered by the homeroom teachers or the teachers. These are only used by our counselors, so Miss Bre, who is our elementary counselor, is using this material. So if a student is had, um the topic right now is bullying. We have, students don't know anymore, which is bullying, so. So it in, it is in line with also our uh behavior management plan. So if a student is like um acting up and they are, they feel like they're being bullied. The the counselor will pull them out and use these materials so that they are aware of.
Gonna be like an individual?
Yes, individual, individual and um our counselor, head county counselor is speaking on this. So those, that's the second part of the foundation of our C T E. The third part is our S V A B, Work Keys and Choice three sixty. So this is also under the consolidated grant, therefore, we're not using local money. Uh when we first invited the G C C person or workies. Um I first asked for a quote, because I was thinking maybe we'll just have to handle it locally. But when I found out that our budget, when I applied for our, under our C G. But when I found out that our budget, when I applied for our, under our CG, it was approved, then we we called the the person in GCC and she was confronted by the GDOE for that specific project that they will pay for our our um at uh for our work keys and choice three sixty. And we have a word from it. Um Mister Joe Sanchez as well knows about it. So we have that ongoing. Um another part of the foundation for our CTE program is the college and employment opportunities. Um have been sending a lot, um the flyers that we we get from you, from the community, we have been Really personalizing how we reach out to our students to send them. So for our UOG Talent Search Program, this has been ongoing. Um so they finally missed um And our principal already communicated with UOG and they said that even if it says if it didn't say charter schools, they will accept our students. I think we do, I believe we sent out about five students already to apply for that program.
Oh wow, that's good.
And um they were really guided, personally guided by uh uh Mister Castro, our curriculum coordinator and Ms. Sanchez, of course. Um the second one is the American Job Fair. Um there was uh this is an initiative from Department of Labor. Um where they are accepting one hundred twenty um schoolers to get uh to get paid during the summer for this, but there's qualifications. So we sent out twenty students of our own students who applied. To the point that um there's an ongoing communication with Mister Flores and our principal because usually you do the application online. So they called our students and they applied because there are requirements. Well, twenty of them applied and then they saw already the application was so many from Guahan, from GAT. So they are uh sending their social worker here instead of our students going to the mayor's office. They're gonna send someone here to to just finalize their paper. So um it's a good thing. That means we're really pushing our students and directing them and guiding them. And thanks to our administration and our um leadership team for that. Last but not the least, to prepare the groundwork for our CTE program is the RFP for the professional services that um we talked about during our work session last time. So I would ask for you to do vote on um releasing the RFP. I have already prepared the RFP for this professional service, who will be the Consultant or our professional who will who oversee our CTE program coming through. Um other than that, we need also a permanent position for a CTE council. Cause we wanted to, the goal is to really upscale and make sure that we get this program running as soon as possible. Uh because our high school students are, yes, we are chartered for as a as a for DI, for literacy program, but our high schoolers um due to the data that we have, um our seniors, we don't so they don't go to college right away. Then we we have to guide them um to their their interests, their choice of interest. So um since we're also due for charter renewal, then you could also add this into our new charter renewal.
Cause they have a choice if they're going to school or going to work workforce.
And we don't, this, we don't remove the fact that um where it's not just career technology education. That's why it's CC because it's college and career technology.
She's supposed, Madame Fay, you can hear us?
Hello ma'am, good morning.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So if I could just request to eh um to for the trustees to move forward upon your, also your approval and your recommendation in our work session that we do have um can release the RFP for for the consulting um.
I I think we can vote on it, Miss Anne. I think we can vote on it now. Can we, can we get a motion for that to be approved? Um
Release the RFP.
Yes, so move.
Okay, second please. I need a second. Okay, thank you. Uh was uh the motion was put by trustee Havelock, seconded by trustee uh uh trustee Rosie Tana Tongo. Um any discussion? Just uh uh trustee uh Akiza?
Well, I see it to be important, the earlier the better.
Yeah.
Let's vote. Let's vote. I Okay, vote up, everybody. A motion carried? Okay, I'll launch the uh last, are you gonna put that in the newspaper? How are we gonna do that? How are we gonna do the launching of the uh? How are we gonna do the launching of the positions? Go ahead, go ahead.
So Yeah, even Mister Akiza already because she voted and then she even said that.
Yeah, okay.
Say hi to my girlfriend in the behind.
Sorry, I have to be out because I have a meeting to go as well. Please continue, please continue. Sorry about the noise.
Okay.
Here I am, out here in the city. You know, you're familiar with this, trustee Havelock, you've been here. Sorry to get out of the office, but I have internet. Go ahead, please continue.
So thank you for the the confirmation on the RFP. We will release it tomorrow. And then we'll wait for it to be for responders and their deadline will be in March seventeenth. We have to post it and we have to follow the the procurement process. Uh the reason, just just to reiterate, the reason for an RFP is because according to the the law, anything above or Certain amount, we really have to release an RFP. Just to make sure that we're all following the procurement law. So
Can you touch on human resources?
Not yet, the next one. So Just to confirm too, during our work session, other than the RFP, we also need someone Someone for our CTE counselor. Um the ratio for our, the uh The ratio for a counselor to a student is usually two hundred fifty per one counselor. But we only have two, so five hundred, that's standard.
Are are you, are you able to assure the funding on that, CEO?
Yes, because we do have um two, three vacant positions. We don't have a program coordinator as well. Now we're we're
I I I think the reason why you wanna be able to do that, uh fellow trustees, because you wanna be able to fast-track the program with the CTE program that we would like to really get in. Um I think that's the uh, that's the move that we're trying to do. That's why we're kind of have to have to expedite all of this now. Now that the funding is assured, uh we will be so, we'll be solidify, solidifying and pushing the CTE programs that the CEO have identified. So we really need somebody to do it. Uh so that's the whole reason why we have those positions being posted. Uh I I I don't have any question. So let let's proceed, the CEO, go ahead.
Confirmation. Um the last part, which is we're done with the CTE plan. So we are now using the cafeteria for serving meals, um update. Because we already have tested all the equipment, they're working here and everything, so we'll be Our goal is
CEO, can the trustees be able to eat there one day with with the, with what's being served? Honestly? We wanna be able to feel that as well. Can you invite the trustees to be able to
Yes, we will. And we'll be using our new trays, our Spoons and forks, um our new refrigerator up in the heater. They're all working. So no more will be, our students be eating on a plastic container and
Can we make sure that the cameras are marked GATs? I don't want the GATs, the cameras to disappear because those cameras are very expensive.
Yeah, they're tagged man, they're tagged, but we cannot
Not tagged, but I want them marked.
Yeah, we'll put a tag sticker because for anything under the federal, we're not supposed to put markers.
As long as it doesn't disappear, okay, guys? Those cameras are very expensive. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, uh CEO.
Yeah, so part two now, part two now of our report, done with our academics and uh it's HR. So the currently filled position last Tuesday, I believe, right? Ms. Jamie was our middle school social studies teacher. Thank you, Laura. So the last one was for the high school, um which I reported. Now this one is for middle school. No, the last one is for And then now Um oh, by the way, the new middle school teacher, I believe for this high school is also, i- it's also an asset for us because um this teacher has a certification Yeah, so if we do have
What what is she? What is her second degree? What is her second degree?
Her degree is in Her, she has a bachelor's degree and her um
Go ahead.
Forgot. But she has a bachelor's degree, but her experience is a, is an elementary Yeah. And she also ha- started like different programs, Olympia, like Clubs and organization and
I'm losing them. Wow, I lost them, Bernard. Bernard. Yeah, yeah, go ahead. I could hear you guys.
Madame Fay, can you hear us now?
I can hear you.
Yeah, so for the human resource, our vacant position, the new one is the custodian. And the this one of our custodians already um moved on. Do you hear us? And then, of course, we added the CTE council. Yeah, part and budget hearing update from Ms. Feli.
On the finance, uh the last No, there's no, but they're going to call for a budget meeting. So I I made the follow-up with this Feli, the secretary of And that they're still gathering a lot of information and they will inform us, hopefully this month. The month of February for the end of the month about the
Uh but they also already requested for information and data because um the council, um chairwoman for Chairwoman Council, Chair Chairwoman Ms. Vangisipeda has an an upcoming meeting with Senator Barnett. So in preparation of that meeting, they asked for, yes, Chris Barnett. Because the three, uh because of that upcoming meeting, um they were requesting for some date and information which we already submitted yesterday.
Yeah, thank you.
Um then, I think that's it for the budget. RFP for CTE Coordinator, which was already approved. So definitely, we will send you out the 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 schedule, which will be released tomorrow and it will, the deadline for submission will be March seventeenth.
Okay.
Seventeen is my day, right?
Yes. So so next project is to prepare the RFP for the A and E or the project management for our future um candidate. Yes, it's gonna take a while because we need to really read in every RFP, this definitely will be Everything is included and it has to be specific and um it really needs so much research work because we have to customize it to our own. Just like in every RFP, we cannot just like copy and paste because
Yeah, the other ones, yeah.
It has to be based on what we really need. So executive session, do we have anything for executive session?
I I don't have anything.
Get out of this first.
Oh, okay.
Do you have anything on the executive session?
No.
Mister Influx said he has.
Go ahead though. Okay, let's recess. All right, let's get out of the regular, regular session right now. Uh what's the time?
What time is?
The time now is, what time is it now? Thirty-one, let's get out of the regular session and proceed to start to the uh to uh, yeah, go ahead, uh trustee Havelock. Do you have a motion? Okay.
Go ahead and get out from our regular session and go into executive session at the time, two thirty-one.